All right, I thank you. We are live now, so I'm going to call this meeting to order. We have all council members present. Is there any disclosure pecuniary interest or the general nature thereof?
Mayor Martin, it's Tom Marks. I'd like to declare on closed session item three, fruitridge lime.
Thank you. So noted. Diane will send you the form, I know. Okay, the adoption of the minutes. Would you read the motion, please?
Madam Mayor, the motion reads moved by councillor Wynn, seconded by councillor Rowe, that the minutes of the regular meeting of council dated Monday, January the 11th, 2021 be adopted.
Any questions or concerns? If not, call the vote.
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Councillor Crebbs?
Yes.
Councillor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Councillor Wynn?
Yes.
Councillor Rowe?
Yes.
Mayor Martin? Yes. The resolution carries. Thank you. We have two delegations tonight, so Mr. Perrin will let Theresa McClellan in first. She's wanting to speak about the Port Stanley Heritage Conservation District. Welcome, Theresa.
Hi, thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you, council, for giving me this time today. I appreciate it. Okay, you don't do it in the, okay, perfect. We'll start there. That's clearly just a cover page. We can, next slide. We was hoping to speak to you today, and I do very much appreciate your time and patience with us and others in the last few weeks as we wrap our heads around this proposed plan. So today, very quickly, and I'll do my best to stick to my 10-minute timeline. We're hoping to give you a bit of background about us, what our frustrations are. Did a little bit of a jurisdictional comparison, some financial implications, and then I will wrap it up as fast as I can. Next slide. So it's just to explain to you a little bit about who we are. Our family's owned two properties on Bessie Street for my entire life. It was my grandmother's place. My parents enjoy it now, and I hope to enjoy my retirement there, too. So this community is very special to us. We know it well, and we love it. We wanted to speak to you today a little bit because we weren't sure how much time we'd have at that Zoom meeting that's planned. I think I already mentioned, thank you to staff. You've been patient, kind. Your staff are phenomenal. And several councillors, including Madam Mayor, reached out and spoke to us over the last few weeks to discuss our concerns. So we thank you all for that and appreciate your responsiveness. And, you know, I'm not here to speak for others, but we have spoken to many of our neighbours on Bessie, Maud and William, and not one is supportive of the pace or the entire content of the plan. And I think those are two separate issues, the pace and content, that we'd like to discuss. Mayor. Madam Mayor reminded me today that the signatures that we currently have need a little more detail to be considered a formal petition. But we just put it up yesterday and really did make an attempt to spread it only within those affected. And we've already got 240, or actually 250 now, signatures, people opposing this. So it's not just us. The community was quite blindsided. Next slide. So a little bit of history from our perspective. We couldn't nail down the first date this came up, which is why I put question marks there. But it was brought up the first time. A lot of community backlash occurred, and it was, council didn't proceed at that time. Then in 2012, as you know, and you'll know much of this, I know, I think the key part is near the end, that this council asked the consultants to update the plan. Or, sorry, 2012. It again, but in that time, you included newsletters and several public meetings before council decision, which is essentially what we all really want here, is just a little more time and a lot more information sharing before you consider a council decision. But again, in 2013, it was, they decided not to take it forward, and we, as property owners, thought it was over. Thought that was the end of it. We were very blindsided to hear, while you were doing things in 2019 and 2020, we didn't know about them at all. There has been zero communication of any kind in any form to the affected landowners until this week or last week on that second attempt at mailing since 2013. That's the part that's really hard to wrap our heads around. You know, we all took part in this in 2013 and voiced our opinions, and we felt they were heard. We thought it had gone away. And then it appears the project came back up in a silo without talking to those affected. It doesn't just appear that. We know we didn't get any mailings. We didn't get any emails. We didn't get any newsletters. All we got was CTV News advising us that this was happening first, which I think is unacceptable. So, yeah, some owners are just getting them literally today, so some people still don't know. Next slide, please. So communications-wise, this is a bit of a problem to us. No communication at all. Early January, some received unaddressed mail, just put in their physical mailboxes, which you have corrected since, which is great. But, so we became aware through the news. And then we went on your website, and it says, hey, there was a public meeting in 2020. This was listed until last week on your website, but it never happened. So we were all confused and calling our neighbours, and did you go? Did you know about it? And nobody knew. No one. And I understand that some on the Port Stanley Villagers Association might have known, but we don't know anyone on that. And as far as we know, none of those people live in the affected areas. So no local communication occurred at all. And instead of when, you know, we pointed out that this public meeting never happened, instead of rescheduling it before the statutory consultation meeting, we just removed it. So as you know, your new plan to hold the meeting on February 10th allows only one chance for the public, the current plan allows the only public meeting to occur during the statutory consultation period. The only meeting planned on this period is the statutory one, which is not fair to us landowners, especially considering the time of year and whatnot. Next slide. Some of the rash, oops, where are we there? I think you went backwards. There we go. Some of the rationale, and these are, you know, some affect us and some affect others. But together, what we've heard through talking to our neighbours and and other people within Port this week are, you know, this is a contentious issue in the past. This has not changed at all. Forcing it through is eroding goodwill in council and creates distrust. This is a beach community, and it's off-season. As you know, from the first physical mailbox drop, you're not going to reach people as quickly. They often don't live in Port. These are their summer cottages. They may rent them out during the year. It's very hard to engage this particular community at this time of year. As I mentioned in here, most of our best meetings happen at local pubs and yards and on the beach and at the local legion. And we have absolutely no opportunity to do any of that in the timeline that you've currently put this project on. Further, it's a global pandemic and a state of emergency in Ontario. Your entire statutory consultation period is happening during a lockdown order. And while I understand that we, you know, normally we'd be able to go around door-to-door and get signatures, talk to our neighbours, talk to you, come in, talk to council. We have no opportunity to do any of that right now, and it seems widely unfair. The 2012 property inventories are severely out of date. We can, just sitting at home in our non-cottage residences, we can detail at least 15 properties on Bessie, Erie, William and Maud that are recorded wrong and are original, or have been improved or torn down since the inventory was done in 2012. So it's wildly inaccurate at best, causing many to question it even more. And, you know, overall, most of us feel that none of these properties have any actual heritage value. We understand the need to want to wisely manage development in the area, but feel that using the Heritage Act is inappropriate considering the actual state of these homes and the number of the homes that you've identified so far. Next slide. All that said, there's a lot on the municipalities' plate and on taxpayers' plate already right now. With all the water rate discussions, garbage bin changes coming, and the harbour plan upcoming, this is an added expense and hassle that it just isn't welcome from our perspective. There's little or no public will for it, especially so within the group of owners and the affected properties. It keeps coming up that it, the feeling amongst the owners is that the decisions are being made by people that it doesn't affect and that we aren't being consulted, and that's a terrible feeling. And the mayor's public statements on the news in support of the HCD, while I understand the sentiment, have caused several to question, you know, whether this is even a democratic nature. People feel like some people, several minds are already made up without having even talked to us and that there may be a conflict of interest. And I think there have been letters that have gone in suggesting that as well. So there's a lot of concerns. Most of them for us are about timelines and the pace and the lack of ability to talk to us. But when we get into the details of the plan, there's a lot of concerns there as well. Compared to other, like jurisdictions, it's immensely broad, far too generic. It doesn't take in account, for example, one example, the realities of the size of the lots on Bessie and Maud. We've got 40 by 50 lots, and this plan says, we encourage you to build out and back. It's logistically impossible. So we feel that a lot of edits would need to be made if it did go forward to reflect the actual realities of the community it's looking at. There's some concern about overlap and incongruency with the proposed harbour development plan. The harbour is listed in the heritage documents as a key heritage vista to protect. And if a heritage district does go forward, many are asking the question about whether it should reasonably also be included and not exempted. If we're going to do it for this area, why not do it for everything? Why place the burden on these single family homes and businesses in the area and, you know, let the harbour be built up? That's causing a lot of questions. Public perception is currently that council is purposely trying to push this through during the winter without allowing time for a basic level of dialogue. No targeted information sharing about implications has occurred, and no time allowed for adequate public participation. There's my 10-minute timer, so I will hurry to turn this up. Next slide. A little comparison. We did a really quick review of other active designated heritage communities in Ontario, and this is unprecedented in its size. 179 properties within Little Village of Port Stanley represents approximately, and I did put a caveat in here, the planners can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but about 15 to 18%, I think, of properties within the village. That's huge. For comparison, the city of London, with a population of well over 500,000, has about 500 properties. So as you can see, it's not congruent there. But when we actually did look, there were only three other regional municipalities that have one of these. Blue Water here on East and Clarrington. Two of those include only commercial properties. Clarrington includes some residential, but only 14. Other beach tourist areas are, and you can see them as well as I can on this list, are all commercial properties only and are much smaller zones. So there's a lot of questions about why the scope, why the map is so broad. And, you know, we've even been told in some messaging that, you know, this won't really affect you. It's been softened. Then why put us on there? Why put a line on a map and tie us down to something if it doesn't accomplish anything new? Anyway, next slide. And I will wrap this up very quickly. We have a lot of financial concerns with respect to our time, money to get through any additional planning reviews. We recognise the application itself is free, but our time is not, and nor are heritage studies should they need to be done. We're also very concerned about the future potential property value. As you know, many studies about heritage districts say that property values stay the same, and that is often true. But they are most often urban centres with large brick homes that have clear heritage value. Here, you're saying, hey, you may not be able to add two bedrooms, and that's clearly going to affect potential future value of these homes and what people can do with them and how much they can enjoy them. From a municipal perspective, there's a lot of money that would need to go into this and potentially FTEs for implementation. We're talking 15% of the town, and, you know, and applications having to go through the municipality for really minor things here. So that clearly creates a workload issue. We were advised, and this is the only positive we're seeing so far, that we may be eligible for a 30% tax rebate. Anybody within this area would be. I wonder how much we, the municipality has thought through what kind of financial effect that could have on the municipal budget if everybody took, you know, took that option and went through the hoops to get the rebate. 179 properties is a couple hundred thousand dollars a year in tax money. So just something to think about. And then that's without having created any incentives, which aren't planned now according to the draft plan. Next slide. In conclusion, this was an exhaustive list. I could probably bore you all for an hour and a half with the concerns I have and that others have, but I won't. We do have an email petition started. We will endeavour, and thank you for advising us of what the legal requirements for a petition will endeavour to get everyone's address and details on it that you require before the February 10th meeting. We look forward to that meeting, and thank you for your time today, and that is all. But please show the picture on the next slide, because it's one of my favourites of my grandmother from way back when, back when the Champion Fuel Oil used to pump fuel out next to a Great Lake, the good old days before environmental protection. Anyway, that is all. Thank you all for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Theresa. Just so you are aware that we did post on Let's Talk Central Elgin, we did post this in November.
I didn't know it existed until last week, that website, and I think many people don't check it regularly, although I do appreciate that information was up there. I know many people will look for it until prompted.
Any projects that we're working on are listed there, and there's a place to ask questions, et cetera, and get answers, so.
Yes, I'm aware of that. Again, we only became aware from the news about this and don't check that regularly. And I don't think many people do, especially those cottagers that don't live in Port and, you know, their main home is elsewhere, and it's a summer cottage for them. So I do appreciate that. It's a wonderful website, and staff do a great job on it.
Thank you. We will be, we will give your presentation and all your information to the consultants so that they can look it through and look, advise us, and can even speak to it at the public meeting on February 10th.
Wonderful. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Theresa.
Thanks for your time, council.
And our second delegation is Terry Kipers from Upper Spring Street, and he wants to discuss the parking there. There's Terry. Okay, Terry, welcome, and you have 10 minutes. Go ahead.
Okay. Well, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. A couple of my neighbours were hoping to speak as well, but I think there's some confusion on the process. They'd sent letters that did not specifically ask to speak. They thought they could speak on behalf of that. I don't know what the solution to that is, but anyway.
Just so you know, our policy is you have to request to be a delegation in order to speak.
Right.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. I hope you're aware of our situation in parking on Upper Spring Street. And anyway, as you know, the Kilgores and I are trying to find a solution together through this. I want to appeal our refusal to be granted a parking pass on Upper Spring Street for a number of reasons. Firstly, the bylaw changes are making us jump through big hoops, which produce absolutely no benefit, in my opinion, for the municipality. I assume the issue is snow plowing, for which nothing changes since the snowplow still has to go around the permitted cars that are out there still. And a few more cars doesn't really make any difference. And plowing snow is hardly an issue anymore in these, you know, with the amount of snow we've been getting in the last five years, I don't think the snowplow has spent an hour on this street per year. What they have done for the last 30 years seems to have been working fine with everyone on the street. I've only had to shovel snow away from my car once in the last five years, and I have no problem with that. But I'm not sure how I under, I'm not sure I understand how we can be forced to park on an unmaintained laneway of which a municipality takes no responsibility for. Our address is Upper Spring Street. Main access to our house is Upper Spring Street. The stairs from Upper Spring Street are designed for easier access and to be used on a daily basis. They are not nearly as steep as the ones to the beach. Tretters are wider and less less high, so they're easier to go down. The stairs down to the beach are seasonal and meant for summertime use. They're very steep and often very slippery in the rain and winter weather. They will often form ice on them with light frost. My car was inaccessible in that freezing rain we had at the turn of the year because you could not walk down those, you couldn't walk anywhere down on those stairs the way they are. I already had an incident, which I misstepped while carrying some empty bottles, and I broke glass all over the stairs. And if I continued to fall, I would have slid right through this broken glass. I am seriously worried about my own safety as far as falling or slipping down these stairs now that I have to use them in the daily weather and daily in all weather conditions. My knees tend to cause issues from time to time, and I'm afraid of stepping down one day and having my knee let go and taking a serious fall. The suggestion of parking on Upper Spring Street to unload our vehicles for groceries and other things we need to manage our household and then drive around and park down below again, in my opinion, is a bit much. I hope some of you have watched Rob Kilgore's video, and I'm sure you wouldn't be interested in doing this either, especially since it produces a little beneficial effect for the municipality. The suggestion of needing parking pads, again, is a great amount of an expense and effort to not solve any real problem. And in my opinion, uglifies the neighbourhood. Not sure if you find that in the dictionary, but if you come down and see the existing parking pads here, I think you'll understand the meaning. As well, Rob was given a ballpark quota of $50,000 to build one, which is an extreme waste of resources and money, in my opinion. I think denying us parking passes gives us, gives no benefit to the municipality. It causes unnecessary difficulties and potential injury and perhaps great expense for myself and the Kilgores. I feel this also detracts from our property value for lack of good access. I'm already hearing that our taxes are a few thousand dollars more than some of the other neighbours who have even wider beachfront access. Now to have less access to the front of our properties is causing me to think that we're paying excessive taxes and losing some benefit. To sum it up, I don't see the benefit to the municipality, but I see it as a great inconvenience to us. A much higher probability of having an accident and the lowering of our property values is a significant problem for us. I sincerely hope that you can understand our desire for a parking pass to alleviate our issues. It is one that will not negatively affect anyone since things have been operating nicely for years as it was. And to top it off, it doesn't cost you anything. You actually make a bit of money from our parking pass fees. And that's the end of my presentation. Thank you for taking the time to hear and understand what we are concerns. I don't know if there's any questions you'd like to ask.
Thank you. Just, I am aware that there is a letter under Correspondence for Action requesting us to do some changes there as well. I just want you to know, you're not, you know, anyway, yeah. If we want to change, we would have to change the bylaw for everyone. We would not make exceptions because and it certainly, and making the road, you know, serviced by Central Elgin, a private road, we can't do that. We've got all kinds of them in the municipality.
I realise that, but I don't think we should have to be subject to parking down there either. We, we don't have a good way to put a laneway down into our property and yeah, other people here have got parking passes because they don't have a laneway either. But since we are being, you know, negatively influenced because we have a a road down there that doesn't get serviced by the municipality, and I don't feel we should have to use that road in that case.
Okay, now, if council wished to re-look at this, we would have to ask staff for a report. So council, do we want to deal with this, this point or during the action one?
Through, through Madam Mayor, whatever works for council.
Council, would you prefer to deal with this now or during the request for action?
Madam Mayor.
Go ahead, Colleen.
Yeah. Either one is fine with me. It's just been an ongoing issue, and the purpose of the parking pass bylaw was sort of thinking about the situation that this particular street is in, and it was meant to be a resolution. It is very disappointing that it has not turned out to be that way. So I really do believe that we owe the residents there a scrub of that bylaw to see if there is absolutely anything else that can be done that would also be applicable to the rest of Central Elgin.
Council, you also had your hand up.
Yes, and I agree with, with councillor Rowe. We should deal with it one way or another, and the one way that I lean towards is to review the bylaw. So I would definitely be looking at whatever it takes to review the bylaw properly and see if some sort of an amendment can be done to accommodate or make it more fair. The thing that I lean towards, it says if they have access to parking, but I think if we said reasonable access to parking, I think that would solve a lot of the problem. But it requires a review of the bylaw, and I'm for reviewing it.
Reasonable leaves it very subjective. That's the only problem with using a word like that. But yes, and councillor Wynn, I believe you were wanting to speak?
Yeah, I'm just in agreement with, with everyone else, Madam Mayor, that I believe we need to look at this and find some resolution for these residents. Thank you.
The part was put under action, our correspondence for action number two, and probably that's at that point where we could make the motion. That would make sense to me because there is action required. And if you are wanting to see the bylaw reviewed, and three of you have spoken toward that, then that's probably the logical time to make that motion.
Agreed.
Anyone else have any questions?
Yeah, I would agree with you as well.
Okay, Karen, Tom?
Yeah, I'm happy to take another look at it.
Thank you. Okay, we will make that motion during the for action. So thank you, Terry, for your presentation. Now move to correspondence for action, and the first item is the Kettle Creek Conservation Authority levy approval. So I'm going to ask Diane to read the motion.
The motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by councillor Crebbs, seconded by councillor Wynn, that the council of the Corporation of the Municipality of Central Elgin approve Central Elgin's apportionment of the 2021 Kettle Creek Conservation Authority levy in the amount of $80,459.52.
Are there any questions? If not, would you call the vote, please?
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Councillor Crebbs?
Yes.
Councillor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
We've lost them.
Lost them.
Okay. Councillor Wynn?
Yes.
Councillor Rowe?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries.
Thank you. And now is the, this was the correspondence from the Kilgores requesting amendments to the bylaw. So I would assume this is where I think Diane's just writing up the motion that we ask staff to review the bylaw and bring us back a report on it, considering what these requests have been. I'm just giving Diane. I'm just giving Diane time to write it. Maybe Tom will be able to get back in then. I don't know what happened. Counselor Krebitz?
Just with this bylaw, the people that own the property, their property address is Upper Spring Street. That's what I'm assuming. And in Mr. Kilgore's letter, he is asking for a pass because he owns property each is I'm just, I don't know, is he being denied a pass or what is the reasoning for him not being able to obtain a parking pass for his address? Does, can I get an answer? Is anybody have an answer?
Mr. Perrin or Mr. Brooks? Go ahead, Mr. Perrin.
Council's bylaw states that if an entrance is able to be provided on the property, then they are required to park on the property or construct a driveway entrance. So when staff reviewed that, in the spirit of the bylaw, there's the ability to park on the property. Both Mr. Kipers as well as Mr. Kilgores. So that's, we carried out the, the intent of the bylaw and realizing that the property is, is fronts onto to Upper Spring. It does have access to the, the, the property below with the private road, which after searching property title, all of these properties actually have needed access to. So that's why the parking pass was denied. So in the spirit of the bylaw, if someone was on a corner lot and their address was on Street A, but they had the ability to park on the flange on Street B, we would interpret it the exact same way.
Okay, I'm, the reason I ask that, just like, we're going through a lot of work here, so I know we can't pick and choose. I had mentioned that last, at the last meeting of, we can't just pick and choose who parking has to, but same, do this entire bylaw. I'll probably vote against reviewing the bylaw if that's going to be the proposal that comes up. I think we can see that these people's addresses are on Upper Spring Street. Is there other parking passes on Upper Spring Street or is there other properties on Upper Springs Street that, Spring Street that do have a parking pass?
Yes, there are through, sorry, through you, Madam Mayor. Yes, there are parking passes that have been issued on Upper Spring Street on properties that have no driveway and no ability to construct a driveway. And your bylaw also states that if you are issued a permit, it may not necessarily be on the street that you're requesting. You may be on of another street that will facilitate snow removal. So as, you know, in this case, in Upper Spring Street, there is a widened section where parking passes have been provided for, so to allow people to park. But then the street narrows up again. So in all likelihood, depending on operations crew, they may not necess, they may provide a parking pass, but it may not be on Upper Spring Street. It may be on George Street where the street's wider to facilitate two-way traffic and allow the street to be plowed. So I guess that's what staff are asking. What, you know, you want us to report back on the bylaw, but what is it that you, that council wants? Because the parking pass situation that's happening now was actually council's intent to deal with the overall restriction. So there was no ability for people to park on streets between three AM and five AM previously at all. If you parked on the street, you were going to get a ticket. There was no ability to you know, give someone a reprieve based on their, their location.
Okay.
Counselor Fair?
So are you saying that any of the people with parking passes on Spring Street are parking on St. George Street or on George Street? I, I thought they were parking on Spring.
No, what I said was there is a section along the length of Upper Spring Street that's widened, that facilitates a bit of a parking bay. And any of the parking passes that have been issued so far on Upper Spring Street are for that parking bay. And we, we dictate where those cars can park when we issue the parking pass. It's not that you can park on any street anywhere you want. We dedicate an area that will facilitate winter control operations. That's what council's policy says. That it's, that it's up to the operations staff to determine a suitable location. And that's suitable to the municipality as well.
And Mr. Perrin, I, I know Upper Spring Street, I've driven down it many times. There is no turnaround at the end at all. You have to use private property to turn any vehicle around like a snowplow. What, what do we use to plow that street?
I believe that's, that's, a street is still a seven-ton unit, a smaller unit.
Okay, no, I just, I was curious because I know you can't turn around if you drive right to the end unless you pull into one of the parking pads that Mr. Kipers referred to. Diane, would you read the motion that you prepared? And then someone can move and second it once you know what it is, if you wish to.
Madam Mayor, I've prepared the draft motion if council agrees with it or they can direct me with any changes. So the motion reads that council directs staff to, to complete a review of bylaw twenty-four fifty-seven being a bylaw to adopt a policy for the issuance of overnight parking permits as per correspondence received from Robert and Ruth Kilgore five-three-zero Upper Spring Street and as per a delegation from Terry Kipers five-thirty-two Upper Spring Street. And further, that said, review be brought forth as a report at a future meeting of council.
Counselor Fair?
I would move that motion.
Thank you. Counselor Rowe?
Second. Oh, sorry, I was too late.
That's all right. Counselor Rowe seconded it.
Thank you.
Mr. Shipway is, would like to speak?
Through you, Madam Mayor, just before you call the vote. So for clarification, for staff to take the review back, the, the intent of the review from council's perspective is to try to create additional opportunities for on-street parking, just so we're interpreting it correct. Is that the intent from the mover and seconder?
Yeah.
That would be my intent, yes.
Thank you.
This is for overnight parking because we don't restrict it in the daytime there. It's just all roads in Central Augen.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Not, not to complicate the issue or whatever, but there is a lot of confusion about that private road and what, what can be done on it and the fact that it's a fire lane and who's responsible for doing what. So clarifying that, I think for everybody there, and maybe they, maybe they're aware, but it's just formalizing it so that it's kind of done and, and we can move on. That's a lot of the hurdle is that they, they, they can't agree amongst themselves about how to maintain it and whatnot. So if they are expected to use that road, what are the expectations of them to do it? And I realize the municipality would only be able to go so far, but at least provide a little bit of guidance where it can be provided.
Okay, because as, as I said earlier, Counselor Rowe, there are several. I know there are two on Sparta line that I passed tonight that have several houses on, but it's up to them to maintain those roads.
Yep, no, well aware.
Any other questions before we call the vote? Counselor Krebitz?
Now, the, that is wider on this Upper Spring Street. How many parking passes is, is there currently overnight? I don't know if somebody has this number on how many overnight passes are currently available on Upper Spring Street? I don't know, does it? Mr. Perrin or Mr. Brooks, would you know that number?
I'm not aware exactly. I believe three or four possibly.
Mr. Brooks, go ahead.
Through you, Madam Mayor, we've issued three parking passes for Upper Spring.
Okay, the, the reason I'm asking that, just looking at it. I'm looking at a picture from Google Earth right now and it looks like it could accommodate two more vehicles rather than, you know, this issue here. I, I, I think we're wasting time here instead of using common sense on this. They're, they're, they're asking for one, if we grant them one parking pass, this issue goes to bed and we don't have to waste our time revamping an entire trying to make special wording for special circumstance. I think it's a waste of time. I think we should just grant these two parking passes and carry on with business. But we can vote on it.
Counselor Krebitz, I just, I will say that Mr. Perrin did offer Mr. Kilgore one parking pass for a year till he could work out something better like a, a platform or whatever. But he was not, he would not, he wanted two for certain. So, and just so you're aware that that was discussed about giving him one. So if there are two left and we gave one to each Mr. Kipers and Mr. Kilgore, then I'm not certain that that will meet their needs entirely, but I agree that we're, we're wasting a lot of time, yes. Go ahead.
Well, like Mr. Perrin said, he says, you know, if they want a second parking pass, we'll give them a second parking pass on a different location. Just, it's just to entitle them one spot on this location and stop wasting staff's time on redoing by law. That's my opinion, but we can vote on the resolution that was asked for.
Before we vote, Mr. Perrin, do you wish to respond to that?
Through you, Madam Mayor, if council's directing us to give one parking pass per residents on Upper Spring Street, if they ask for additional ones, we put them on a, a street that allows for the, the plow to get by. We're happy to do that. We take our direction from council.
Is that, you're saying that that would be everyone on Upper Spring would be given one if they ask for it? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I'm saying, I guess what I'm saying is, I guess what I'm saying is if people apply, I'm hearing that the bylaw is, you don't want to enforce the bylaw that you have. But so that, you know, if someone asks for a parking pass, we issue a parking pass. One per property.
Now, several of the properties do have parking pads on the south side. I'm aware of several of them. What's the will of council? Anyone still wanting? Are you still, we've got this motion that's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion on it before we vote? Not? Would you call the, call the vote, please?
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Krebitz?
No.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks? Still not in, okay. Counselor Wynn?
Yeah, yes.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries.
Mr. Perrin, perhaps you could check with Deputy Mayor Marks to see what problems he's having or if he could even join us by phone so that he doesn't miss out on the meeting. Would you be able to do that?
He's in the waiting room now. He's in the waiting room now, Madam Chair.
Oh, is he? Okay. Very good. Okay, the correspondence action number three. This was this West Edith Cabell private lane, same thing, and this was respecting garbage collection. Do we have a motion for this one?
I have prepared a motion, Madam Mayor.
Okay, has anyone seconded or such? Okay, if you would like to read it and then we can discuss it.
Okay, the motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Mark, seconded by Counselor Fair, that email correspondence received from Ed Finland five-four-seven West Edith Cabell Boulevard dated January the twentieth, twenty-twenty-one, respecting the new garbage cart program and a request for a formalized garbage collection plan on his private road be referred to staff for a report, which will come back to council at a future meeting.
Any questions on that?
Madam.
Yes, go ahead, Counsel Row.
Madam Mayor, it's, it's just a little bit of part and parcel with the parking on Upper Spring and the garbage collection off of the private road. So how do you, it's the, the two issues are sort of related and it's all about the same street and no one wants to really push their cart down a, you know, a football field or one and a half football fields to get to the end of the road to drop their garbage cart off when their address is really Upper Spring. So somehow we've got to figure out what to do with this little piece of our geography.
I would assume if their address is Upper Spring that they could put their cart up on Upper Spring where it would be picked up. It's going to be difficult for them no matter where because they have a hill coming up from the lower street and a hill coming down from the upper street.
Yep.
I would assume Mr. Brooks would probably go and have a look at some of this at some point. So the motion was for staff to come back, like, to go and have a look. We okay with the motion? I, I will ask Diane to call the vote then.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Krebitz?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Muted.
Yes, yes.
Counselor Wynn?
Yes.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. Would you read the motion for correspondence for information?
Next item, next motion, Madam Mayor, moved by Counsel Wynn, seconded by Counsel Rowe, that correspondence items number one through number six inclusive be received as information and filed.
Any questions on that or anything you wanted taken out? If not, would you call the vote?
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Krebitz?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes, yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Wynn?
Yes.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries.
Thank you. Next is the Planning, Central Augen Planning Office, one concerning the land on John Wise Line. Does anyone have any questions before I ask Diane to read the motion? Mr. McClure is on the call. If you have any questions. Seeing none, I will ask Diane to read the motion.
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Counsel Krebitz, seconded by Counsel Fair, that reports to EP oh-two-twenty-one be received as information and that direction be given by council to prepare a site-specific draft amendment to the zoning bylaw to satisfy conditions of a resident surplus to a farming operation severance on lands located at four-five-nine-three-nine John Wise Line, which may be legally described as concession five north part of Lot Twenty, geographic township of Yarmouth, now municipality of Central Augen. And further, that a date for a public meeting be scheduled in accordance with Ontario Regulation five-four-five-oh-six as amended.
Any questions? Not? Would you call the vote, please?
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Krebitz?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Wynn?
Yes.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. Now, the Director of Advanced Destruction Community Services reports. The first one, which is the management review of the water system. Any comments or questions? We certainly do very well. We've, our staff have been excellent at keeping things in good order. Mr. Brooks, did you wish to speak?
I have nothing to add.
Thank you. Would you read the motion, please?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Counsel Rowe, seconded by Counsel Krebitz, that the Council of the Corporation of the Municipality of Central Augen receive and accept the drinking water quality management system TWQMS management review minutes as per report ICS oh-three-twenty-one.
Thank you. Would you call the vote?
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Krebitz?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes, two thumbs up.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Wynn?
Yes.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries.
Thank you. Now the water system infrastructure review. Any questions before I have a read the motion? Counselor Krebitz?
Just one question. I was surprised to see the painting, the exterior. Just one question. I was surprised to see the painting, the exterior painting of the water tower was due in another five years. How often does that tower get painted? This is quite a pricey item too, it's 563,000. Just wondering the timing of that painting of that tower.
Mr. Brooks?
Through you, Madam Mayor, I would suggest that the water tower would need to be painted every 20 to 25 years. Or as needed. We recently hired a firm to power wash the water tower. I believe it was the spring of this year. And there is a fair amount of paint peeling off of that tower. And the, the expense really is all in the scaffolding. That's needed to build to get up, get the painters up to the tower to paint those. So like I said, every 20 to 25 years, I would suspect that the, they'll need to be painted.
Go ahead.
Yeah, the reason I asked that, I was just wondering when it was painted last. It just, it seemed like it was just painted yesterday in my mind. But I guess I'm getting older too.
Well, one of them, Port Stanley was certainly painted while I was on council. Mr. Perrin?
Actually, we were speaking about that today. It was recoded, so an overcoat over the existing coating was done in 2007.
That's the one I remember.
So that's almost 20 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Because we did look, we did look at the time about putting special logo and various things on it and it was way too expensive.
So pictures of counselors on it wouldn't work?
Me? A picture of counselors? Okay, Mr. Krebitz. Would you read the motion, please, Mrs. Wilson?
Certainly. The motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Council Wyng, seconded by Council Fair. That the Corporation of the Municipality of Central Oregon receive and approve the drinking water quality management system. DWQMS Infrastructure Review Report as per Report ICS 0421.
Thank you, and I very much appreciate it because it really gave us a detailed account of our infrastructure. Would you call the vote?
Council Cook?
Yes.
Council Krebitz?
Yes.
Council Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Council Wyng?
Yes.
Council Row?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries.
Thank you. And now the Front Street Slopes, oh, I'm sorry, Council Krebitz.
I'm just on those last two. I'd just like to thank Paul Barletter for preparing those two reports. They were a nice detailed report, so that can be passed on. Thank you.
I would agree. So I said, it really did help us to see all the infrastructure we do have as well with the second one. So Mr. Brooks, pass that on, please. Okay, the Front Street Slope Stability. This is to do with the drain and the final adoption of the, where we're going to put the drain, the one drain. So I'm going to ask Mrs. Wilson to read the motion. When you have it.
Certainly. Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Council Krebitz, seconded by Council Fair. That the Council of the Municipality of Central Oregon endorse the recommendation to adopt alternative one storm sewer outlet to Stanley Park in Filtration Gallery. As noted in the Front Street Slope Stability and Road Reconstruction Draft Project Environmental Study Report. And further, that council acknowledges that upon adoption of this recommended alternative, the municipality can continue into the final design portion of the project as per Report ICS 0521.
Mad, Madam Mayor?
Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Marks.
I know we're still preliminary, but I remember I've had several of the residents up there concerned about parking on the street. Are we too early to address that? Because they would prefer.
Sorry, I asked the same thing today of Mr. Brooks and that will come in this final design such. This is just approving the drain and that, that's all we're doing is where the storm sewer is going to drain.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, would you call the vote?
Council Cook?
Yes.
Council Krebitz?
Yes.
Council Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Council Wyng?
Yes.
Council Row?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries.
Thank you. And now the next one on the Belmont and Port Stanley arenas. Would you read the motion and then we can discuss it?
Madam Mayor, the motion reads, moved by Council Row, seconded by Council Fair. That council directs staff to remove the ice from the Belmont and Port Stanley arenas early due to COVID-19 restrictions placed on its use from the provincial government in response to the COVID-19 pandemic as per Report ICS 0621.
Thank you. Any questions or concerns? Council Fair?
Just a question in regard, I believe the savings was supposed to be about $1,200. I'm wondering, do we save if we refer and or move the people that were working there to other departments? And I did notice that it was supposed to go to asset management. I know asset management was fully dealt with in the budget. And we do have a report that deadlines were going to be met and everything was there. So I'm just wondering about allocating labor there. That's my one question. The other question is, are we really saving if we just allocate to another area? And is that being considered as shifting over in budget to another area?
I'll let Mr. Brooks answer that, but actually the, the money was the 1,200 was per day for the compressor to keep the ice going. Go ahead, Mr. Brooks.
Through you, Madam Mayor, the $1,200 was per week and that, that was to keep the mechanicals, like the compressor, to bring the ice in. That, that doesn't take into account staff time. So that time has been allocated to the 2021 budget. And we won't be placing any additional labor burden on the budget. However, we will be redirecting those staff members to other areas such as the Asset Management Department to carry out some of the needs that those departments have and do some data collection, some maintenance activities as well. So all that, all those labor costs will still continue to be carried through the 2021 budget and there will be no effect to the labor budget.
Mr. Perrin, maybe you'd like to tell how the, it will help the asset management?
Yeah, so from the asset management, Council Fair is correct in that we are working towards some dedicated timeframes for having asset management plans in front of council for the, the core assets that have been identified by the province. So that's roads and bridges, water, wastewater, as well as storm sewers. So those are the core assets. The recreation staff, by pulling them in, will help us utilize, or we can utilize them to collect data on the non-core assets. So parks, infrastructure, as well as all our facilities. So go in and get detailed information on all the components within the arena, for example. So catalog and inventory, compressors with make, model, serial number, year in service. Get all that detailed information. So while it's, it's not part of the core assets, it is the second phase. And we can utilize those staff to collect that data ahead of time.
Council Fair?
Okay, that, that does clarify it. I, I just couldn't see how they would fit in, but I understand, I'm fine with that.
Council Krebitz? Then Council Row?
In this report, it says it's $1,200 per week. It seems we're spending more than that on getting some, a few studies done on parking bylaws. The stay-at-home orders until the mid-February. It's a couple of weeks out. I'd hate to see the order lifted on the middle of February and having to have kids use the ice surface. Again, they were, they were practicing it very well. The COVID-19 protocols prior to the January 12th, the ice would be in use. I know minor hockey would be willing to help out. I was talking to the, one of the gentleman from minor hockey who'd be willing to help out in the, bit of the cost you mentioned that. But if, if the ice was taken out, would we ever put it back in on, on the middle of February? That's one quick question. And I, I haven't heard time pulling the ice out of the arenas, just in the chance that the, you know, it's two weeks away. I think we should give it another two weeks before we make this decision.
Be honest.
I'm sorry, Mr. Brooks, I'm going to let him respond to first and then it's Council Row and then Council Wyng and then Deputy Mayor Marks, so. Go ahead, Mr. Brooks.
I would just, I would just say that while I agree that keeping the ice in does provide a benefit to those kids who play minor hockey. We, we have no commitment from any of the users in Belmont. There, we have heard that Port Stanley Minor Hockey would use the ice if, if they're allowed to get back on. But at this point, we have no idea what the restrictions are going to be in two, three, four weeks from now. What we've seen in the past is a slight rollback of, of the restrictions. For example, we're in kind of a shutdown lockdown right now. We might get back to a gray, the gray zone where we can't use the ice again. And then maybe it's two weeks there and we go back to red where we're only allowed to have a maximum of 10 people on the ice. And at that point, it, it can become maybe less than affordable for those users to use the, the ice. Again, it's council's decision on how they want to proceed with the, the ice. But at, at this point, it's just, it's, it's very uncertain what the future holds for the users of the ice right now. And, and them being able to, to rent it.
Would you also tell them what the surrounding arenas are doing that you're aware of?
So we, yeah, we've contacted Simco, our contractors who work on the compressors. And they had sent over, it was the middle of last week, a list of the municipalities they're working for. And I would suggest that around 75% of their municipalities had been taking the ice out or had decided to take their ice out at that point.
Thank you. Now, Council Row first.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to ask if there was the possibility, if the ice does come out, will the, will there be an opportunity to actually use the, the rink area for like ball hockey or something? If, if things do open up a little bit so that there is at least an indoor recreation location for the balance of the winter?
Mr. Brooks?
Potentially, if there's interest from users and the restrictions allow it, that's certainly something we could entertain.
Okay, good.
There's also thoughts that it may become a vaccination center too. They are requesting municipal arenas, et cetera, often for that. But that's probably well down the road. Council Wyng and then Deputy Mayor Marks.
Hello, oh, there, sorry. I, I was in agreement with Counselor Krebitz. It just seems with everything that everybody is losing at this point and with it only being a couple of weeks away right now to wait and see what the outcome was and to keep the ice there. I do know I had seen, I believe it was on the Belmont Skating Club site today that they were waiting to hear back from us whether they were going to be able to pick up the rest of their season or recover some of it at least. So I'm unaware of Belmont Minor Hockey, but it does seem that at least one of our users in Belmont is still interested in what ice time they could get. So I would certainly be interested in maybe waiting two weeks and to see what the new orders do come out as. Thank you.
Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Marks.
Well, the business part of me says, yes, probably we should pull it out. But the, the human part of me says, you know, for 600 bucks a week, I, I would prefer we wait two weeks. Our numbers today were the best we've had in quite a while. I think we had nine new cases and, you know, it's, it's that where people are down and then if we do this, it's just another blow. You know, I, I would like us to delay this. It's, you know, we have nine more weeks before we get into April and a lot of things can happen. We're gonna have a lot of snow at the end of March. We haven't had much now. I, I don't think we'll see, probably in two weeks we'll end up pulling it, but right now I'd say, you know, we've made a lot bigger mistakes than this one. You know, I was never a fan of those bicycles we're putting in down in Port Stanley and the money we spend there. I, I would prefer if we delayed this for two weeks.
Mr. Brooks, any response?
If, if that's council, we will keep the ice in as long as, as long as directed.
I believe the, the shutdown is still for, it's still three weeks away, I believe. To the what? 10th? Okay, all right. Deputy, or sorry, Dennis Kre, Council Krebitz, sorry.
Yeah, just, just for, sort of the Deputy Mayor Marks' comment about the COVID. In Southwest Public Health, we had, I believe there was 19 resolved cases today and only nine. So we're actually had a increase for the first time in a long time, the COVID. I, I'd like to make a motion or, I don't know who made the motion here, but would it be amended if we could delay this until a further meeting of council?
Mrs. Wilson?
The mover on the motion is Council Row and the seconder is Council Fair.
Council Fair?
Madam Mayor, my feeling is, you know, we can, we can certainly wait. I kind of mixed either way. But the, the space is always going to be there. So whether they actually put skates on to use, to, to play hockey or whether they go in their running shoes and play ball hockey in the arena, to me that kind of gives the same ability for the extent of the winter season, so. Council Fair, I'll let you speak.
I, I was just going to, to say that I would be receptive and modify that motion to give it another two weeks to see what, I know the lockdown is for three weeks. But I think by the end of the second week, they're going to make some rulings or, or inform us whether it'll be extended or not. And if we could maybe make that decision, defer at least till the next council meeting. I would be quite willing to modify the motion to accommodate that.
I would think the logical motion would be to, if we're going to defer to the next council meeting, not giving a specific weeks, that is two weeks away, I believe, so. February 8th would be.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Yes, and just to clarify, I think Deputy Mayor Marks mentioned $600 a week, but I believe the report said it's $1,200 a week for the ice because of the cost of the compressor. So I just wanted to make sure that was out there.
Per arena.
That wasn't clear. Is it actually $1,200 per week per arena or $600 per week per arena?
Mr. Brooks?
600 per arena.
Okay, thank you. My, my mistake.
Okay, are you okay with the motion then? You are the mover, Council Row?
Yes.
To be amended to consider it the next council meeting?
Yes.
Thank you. Would you call the vote then, Mrs. Wilson?
Council Cook?
Yes.
Council Krebitz?
Yes.
Council Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Council Wyng?
Yes.
Council Row?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Thank you. I just remind, remind you that we've already had it open, you know, for, it's four weeks already that, so it's not like we haven't carried the sex for a while now. Anyway, on to the next item and that's bylaws. Go ahead and read the motion if you would.
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Council Wyng, seconded by Council Krebitz, that bylaws 2554, 2555, 2556 and 2557 be taken collectively.
Would you call the vote?
Council Cook?
Yes.
Council Krebitz?
Yes.
Council Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Council Wyng?
Yes.
Council Row?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries.
Thank you. And just so you know that the gentleman who spoke at the Development Charges Meeting this morning wrote back saying that he was satisfied with everything, so. Go ahead and call the next motion.
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Deputy Mayor Marks. Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, seconded by Counselor Fair, that bylaws 2554, 2555, 2556 and 2557 be read a first and a second time.
Call the vote?
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Krebitz?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Wynn?
Yes.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Final motion?
Last motion on the bylaws, Madam Mayor, moved by Counselor Wynn, seconded by Counselor Fair, that bylaws 2554, 2555, 2556 and 2557 be read a third time and finally passed.
Call the vote?
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Krebitz?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Wynn?
Yes.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. We do have a public notice about the Port Stanley Heritage Conservation District public meeting scheduled for Wednesday, February the 10th at 7:00 PM. Is there any new business?
Madam Mayor?
Deputy Mayor Marks, yes.
Just, I, I've been asked by six or seven property owners in the Heritage District, asked me to voice their displeasure at the process of the, us getting to this far with the Heritage District. I'm only the messenger. They asked me what I could do and I said I can bring your comments to council. So I've, I've done that and I'll leave it at that.
I think we've announced this public meeting and we have to go through with it, whether we want to then postpone making any decisions. But I think we have to go through with the public meeting now.
I, just their comments where they were not impressed by the process. They didn't think it was fair, et cetera, et cetera. So I just, like I said, I'm, I'm making their comments, no.
Thank you. No other business, new business? Would you read the motion to go into closed?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Counselor Krebitz, seconded by Counselor Rowe, that council, excuse me, council proceed into closed session at 8:42 PM in order to address a matter pertaining to advice that is subject to social client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose. Position, plan, procedure, criteria or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on are on behalf of the municipality or local board, a proposed pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board and personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees.
Thank you. So I, I would think to make it easier for Deputy Mayor Marks, we will, we can consider closed session items one, two and four before we do three. Would you go ahead and call the vote for moving into closed?
Certainly. Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Krebitz?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Wynn?
I'm, I'm sorry, through you, Madam Mayor. My Zoom dropped and I just came back in as you were calling the vote. I just want to be sure, I think you said we're going, we're calling a vote to go into closed session?
That is correct.
Yes.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.